Call this meeting in order. Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, April 4th, 2018, and it is 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell is absent and excused. City Attorney Manicklear.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for invocation tonight by Pastor Ferguson, and also remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. We are reminded from Psalm 86 and verse 10 and 11. It reads, "For thou art great and dost wondrous things, thou art God alone." Verse 11 says, "Teach me thy way, O Lord; I will walk in thy truth, unite my heart to fear thy name." Let's pray. Father, we recognize your greatness in this place tonight. Father, we thank you for, as we gather, we recognize that you, God alone, do wondrous things. We ask you tonight to teach us your way, as we come before you and become before this entire city, to recognize your greatness. We ask that you would teach us, as the council, your way that's pleasing in your sight. We pray that you would bless this meeting as we gather, in your holy precious name, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand by nation under God in his visible liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you. Okay, the council has before them the minutes of the regular meeting, March 21st, 2018. What's the pleasure, the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ferguson.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on Wednesday, March 21st, 2018.
Aye.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Let's see, carries. Presentations. Let me come down there. Our first presentation tonight is a Merrill proclamation designating the month of April is the water preservation. So I'd like to ask Abby from St. John's Water Management, come on up.
City of Rockledge Merrill proclamation, St. John's Water Management District, whereas water is a basic and essential need of every, every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida, water management districts and the city of Rockledge are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the city of Rockledge and the state of Florida have designated April a typically dry month when water demands are most acute as Florida's water conservation months, to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the city of Rockledge has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water, which will provide a healthy economy and prosperous community. Now therefore, I, Thomas J. Price, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Rockledge, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month in the city of Rockledge, and calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. And this proclamation is for the St. John's Water Management District.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Another proclamation, Florida Water Professionals Month, and is it Kevin? Come on up, Kevin.
Thank you. Appreciate this.
Presented to the Florida Water Professionals Month, whereas the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association, organized in 1941, is a nonprofit trade organization that promotes the sustainability of Florida's water utility industry through workforce development, to protect the health of Florida's citizens and to preserve the state's water resources. And whereas this organization offers water and wastewater treatment plant operator and water distribution system operator training courses required for the state of Florida's operator licenses, eight voluntary certification programs, and continuing education programs for operator license renewal. And whereas this organization is recognizing the importance of the Florida statutes and administrative code that regulate the water industry, acts as liaison between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and industry personnel. And whereas the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association recognizes all those who have played a significant part in operating and maintaining drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater systems in Florida by celebrating Florida Water Professionals Month, which applauds their constant efforts to protect our health and environment. Now therefore, I, Thomas J. Price, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Rockledge, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Florida Water Professionals Month in the city of Rockledge, and extend greetings and best wishes to all observing that. Congratulations.
Okay, our next presentation's awards for first quarter 2018, Employee of the Quarter, Sherri Cassisous, Deputy City Clerk, City Hall Administration. Come on up, Sherri. Come over here.
Sherri, on behalf of myself and the city council, the citizens of Rockledge, and your fellow employees, please accept my congratulations on being selected as City Employee of the Quarter 2018. During this time of change, you have done a remarkable job managing the front desk, answering the phones, responding to constituent inquiries, overseeing the library, and going through the transition of new software. Furthermore, you are continually assisting the Building Department, team members with numerous responsibilities and transactions, all while keeping up with your own duties. We appreciate everything you are doing, and your hard work has gone, has not gone unnoticed.
Congratulations, Sherri. You now have one. So everything I've seen in City Hall for now, I'm expected to see that been on, okay? We have now our Beautification Awards, Residential and Commercial. Our residential people, I don't think are here. Erin and Tracy, are they here?
Oh, they did, ma'am.
Come on up.
Hi, congratulations.
Come on over here.
As chairman of the Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Board, it is with great pleasure that I inform you that your residence at 950 Brunson Glen has been chosen to receive the board's Excellence in Beautification Award for the first quarter of 2018 in the residential category. The board wishes to express its appreciation to you for the time and resources spent in the perpetual maintenance of your residence in such a manner that it is indeed an asset to our community.
Great. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
beautification award from the city.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. If everybody in the city did what you guys did, we'd have a beautiful place as well. But that house, I recognize that house. That's in Leaven Park, right?
Yes.
That's an award-winning model. I don't know if you guys know that, back in the 60s, when that model was built. It's got a courtyard in the front, a courtyard in the back.
We know it very well.
That won awards, that house plan won awards throughout the United States as the best, the best-designed home in the United States in 1965, I believe.
We love it. That's why we bought it.
It's really, really neat house. And nobody's ever, has ever replicated that house before, that plan again. And you would think you would see it more often, but it's really a cool plan. Congratulations.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go have a picture.
Our commercial beautification awards for Rockledge Health and Rehabilitation Center. Do we have anybody? Come on up.
Dear Mr. Remador, as chairman of the Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Board, it is with great pleasure that I inform you that your business, Rockledge Health and Rehabilitation Center at 587 Barton Boulevard, has been chosen to receive the board's Excellence in Beautification Award for the first quarter of 2018 in the commercial category. The board wishes to express its appreciation to you for the time and resources spent in the perpetual maintenance of your facility in such a manner that it is indeed an asset to our community. Congratulations.
I see you around a lot. Let's grab a picture, unless you want to speak about your place. Have the mic if you want to.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Remador. I'm the Executive Director for Rockledge Health and Rehab. I've been at the facility a little over seven months, so I can't really take too much credit for the beautification award, but the individuals that I have with me, Ashley Foster's our Director of Nursing, she's been with the facility for almost 10 years. Ms. Mary Harrison is the Director of Environmental Services, she's been with us about eight years. And Dave Bowers, our Plant Operations Director, has been with the facility 18 years. So it's a, let's give them a round of applause, because it's really. So like I said, I really can't take much credit. Thank you to Mayor Prince and then the council for the recommendation award, so I really appreciate it.
I want to remind everybody out here about our trash bash Saturday morning. If anybody wants to send their kids or come themselves, help out, we meet here at 8:00 on Saturday morning, and we pick up trash throughout the city. And sometimes it's a lot of fun, but we always feed you, there's always good food here. So if anybody wants to come out, please, we appreciate it. And the kids, and high school kids get community service hours for it. They all have to have that to graduate today. So thank you. Hopefully some of you will show up. Okay, our Business of the Quarter, Ashley's of Rockledge. Malik, come on up. I don't know if any of you recognize Malik here. He's the new owner of Ashley's. He purchased it this past year and took over when?
August.
August of last year, 2017. It really hasn't changed inside. It's still the same Ashley's, the same food, but it's a little step up. Believe me, I go there on Wednesday nights for wings. It is a little stepped up. But Rockledge, Florida, certificate of commendation presented to Ashley's of Rockledge, 1609 Rockledge Boulevard, selected by the Rockledge Business Development Committee as the Business of the Quarter, first quarter 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Malik. Now, folks, we have a very special recognition this evening. I'd like to ask Chief Mattson to come forward. I am certain that many of you are already familiar with the distinguished Fire Chief, Tim Mattson. There is no need for introduction here. But for those of you who do not know him, Chief Mattson has faithfully and dutifully served the city of Rockledge and its citizens for 34 years as a member of the Rockledge Fire Department. Having embarked on his career with the city's fire department, April 1984, as a firefighter, Chief Mattson rose quickly through the ranks, serving in several capacities, including Lieutenant, Battalion Chief, and EMS Logistics Chief. In October 2015, Tim was selected to serve as Fire Chief. Throughout his notable career, Chief Mattson has garnered numerous awards. He has a five-time recipient of the Fire Department's Employee of the Quarter Award, a two-time recipient of the Department's Quality Public Service Award, was named Safety Employee of the Year, also received the Employee of the Year Award, the highest award granted to a city employee. We extend sincere appreciation and gratitude to Chief Mattson for his dedicated and devoted service to our city and our residents. He will retire on April 17, 2018, 34 years to the day after his journey with the Rockledge Fire Department began. Congratulations, Chief. Well deserved.
And I got you a special, City Ken. You only get this if you retire over 30 years. This one has the diamonds in it.
All right.
It's a very nice one.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Here's your gift. Let's grab a picture. Do you want to speak for a moment?
If I could just take a moment?
Take a moment.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you. I thought about what I might say when this night came, and. It's nice. I basically, I think I can sum it up by saying that I'm blessed and thankful to have been able to serve the city that I call home. And couldn't have done it without the men and women that I've worked with, and all the city employees that I've built relationships with, and especially my family and friends that have supported me all these years. So I thank you very much for this recognition. It means a lot, and thank you.
Now I have one more presentation, or I don't, but our auditors do. Do our auditors in the audience, come on up. She's going to give us a report on the financial status of the city.
Hello. My name is Christine Nolran. I am the partner at CarRigs in Ingram, who oversaw your financial statement audit. Our office is, look, just a minute, wait.
Just give it a second for everybody to clear out. They don't want to hear your report, I'm sorry.
Maybe we should do presentations to last.
We need to remember this, if we ever have to raise taxes, we do it on a meeting where we have no presentation.
For those of you who are left in the audience, this is a great presentation. You're going to hear about the financial report of the city. Go right ahead.
Okay. Our office is located at 215 Baytree Drive in Melbourne. So again, if you didn't hear me before, my name is Christine Nolran. I'm the partner who oversaw your financial statement audit. I'm going to take you really high level, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. So you did receive a clean, unmodified opinion over your financial statements. In your general fund, you are now up to eight months of basically unassigned fund balance. So to cover eight months' worth of expenditures in there, that's a good, healthy reserve, considering it takes FEMA over a year to get you funds after a hurricane comes. It's nice to have that cushion.
Bring that mic closer to your mouth.
So if you look in your sanitation fund, that was your only enterprise fund that had an operating loss, so all your debris removal from your hurricanes are in there. And you only had revenue, some revenue from FEMA for Hurricane Matthew. You don't have any revenue in there for Hurricane Irma. So when you're looking at the health of that fund, that's something to take into consideration. There wasn't any new GAsB's that applied to your financial statements this year, but next year, GAsb-75 relates to OPEB. So the way that that liability is calculated will change, and most likely that liability will increase next year. Just something to keep in mind. If you look, if you want to follow along, on page 97, these are the internal control reports. So last year, we had four internal control comments. All of them were cleared. So there's different levels. There's material weakness, which is the most significant. You had one last year, you don't have any this year. You have one significant efficiency last year, and you have one this year. They're different. The one you have for this year, the accounting software you were using didn't allow your finance department to book all of the year-end accruals in the software. So now you're in the middle of your software conversion, so that will clear that comment next year. There wasn't a review mechanism in place, because Matthew had to keep it all in Excel files outside the system, which is very difficult. So we did have one minor adjustment for one of those entries. On page 102, we did have a, more like an improvement point in your processes. There was inventory, it's a very small dollar amount, things like nuts and bolts, that there wasn't a set methodology for how you're valuing them. So we just recommended that management come up with a method to come up with the value. We also had accrued claims liability, so now that you're doing a lot more self-insurance with your health insurance, we just recommend that you either get an actuary or work closer with your third-party claims advisor to try to get better reporting, to estimate that liability a little bit better. And then the last one was a compliance issue with Florida statutes. You've already corrected it, it's in the agenda today. It's just to get council approval and police chief certification to spend, forfeit your funds. So that's just a technicality in the process. We didn't see any funds that were spent on something that shouldn't have been.
Anybody have any questions of the auditors? How long, how long did you guys perform this audit? You started back in what? December, I thought.
Towards, yeah, towards the end of December, and then.
Had somebody here, at least sometimes two, two and three people here.
Yeah, through about mid-January, yeah. And then we're usually waiting on actual reports to finish up, which is why there's a delay from when we do testing to be able to present to you.
And from your experience working with other cities our size, eight-month supply of reserves is pretty healthy?
Yeah, the, I think the GFOA recommends a minimum of three. But when you're in Florida, and FEMA takes forever to send you the money, it's nice to have additional. You're actually one of the few cities in the county that got obligations from FEMA for Matthew before the end of the year. Most of them weren't able to put hardly any of that revenue in the same time period. And you figured that came in October, 12 months, they couldn't get through the paperwork.
Right.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. And also for the people in the audience, this is public information. This will be available, our audit report, and I think they keep this, a copy of it right out here in the lobby.
Yes, sir.
On the desk out there. If anybody ever wants to review our, our audit, we have an audit once a year. By law, we have to have an audit once a year, and it's always available to residents of the city, or anybody. It's public information.
Exciting reading.
It's very exciting, yes. To read all the mumble jumble of the state GAsb, and what GAsb even stands for, and all these, these numbers of GAsb, different rules and regulations, it's absolutely crazy.
I do have one. Can, can I ask you one? Can you come back up for one second? This is kind of an off-the-wall question. It has nothing directly to do with, but you said that the GAsb standards are going to change again next year. What, why do they constantly change? Is this like, is this CPAs finding something for themselves to do, or?
I have heard comments that the board is justifying their existence, but the.
Matt, you've made this argument, haven't you?
Yeah. The number of GAsBs that have come out that have big impacts to your financial statements has been a much faster rate than the Financial Accounting Standards Board. So the one for next year specifically is going to make the measuring of other post-employment benefits to be measured like your pension. So the footnotes are going to get longer and have more information in them. And your OPEB for you is basically, it's considered the rate that you are paying additional premiums, because the state requires you to allow retirees to be on your health insurance plan.
Say that again?
Yeah. So there's a Florida statute that retirees from the city have to be allowed to participate on your plan. You don't have to pay any of their premium, but you have.
Plow that already.
Right. So because they are older individuals, it is assumed that it will cause your health insurance premiums for your group rate to be higher, because they're on your. for your group rate to be higher because they're on your plan. So therefore, you have a liability for this future increase in payment of your premiums.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right.
It's just, it's kind of like though, it's like, it's so screwed up, they have to change it every year to make it less screwed up supposedly, I guess. And I'm not sure that that's working.
Keeps Matthew busy, that's all. Right? Okay, there's no financial report today. Let's move on to public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. We have a first ordinance, second reading, public hearing, ordinance number 1729-2018. Who's going to give me this?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Dasky.
Offer ordinance number 1729-2018 entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, Deleting Chapter 8: Fire Protection and Prevention of the Rockledge Code of Ordinances." Offer this for second reading by title only and open to the matter to a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1729-2018, in ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, deleting Chapter 8, quote, "fire protection and prevention," close quote, of the Rockledge Code of Ordinances in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter 8, quote, "fire protection and prevention," close quote. Declaring that invalidity of any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
At this time, I open this to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this particular ordinance? Do we have any cards on this ordinance? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this particular ordinance? Seeing none, close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. B, ordinance, second reading, public hearing ordinance 1730-2018. Who's going to give me this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Offer ordinance number 1730-2018 entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, Amending Section 59.85D of the Rockledge Land Development Regulations Regarding Property Registration Fees for the Properties in Mortgage Foreclosure." To offer this for the second reading and open the matter up to public hearing.
By title only?
I'm sorry, by title only. Yes, thank you.
We could be here a while.
Yeah.
Motion?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 1730-2018, in ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, amending Section 59.85D of the Rockledge Land Development Regulations Regarding Property Registration Fees for properties in mortgage foreclosure to be established from time to time by resolution. Declaring that invalidity of any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
At this time, I open this to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on concerning registration fees for properties in foreclosure? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Ferguson.
I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. See ordinance, first reading, deleting and replacing Section 57.79 of the Rockledge Land Development Regulations. Who's giving me this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Ferguson.
I offer an ordinance deleting and replacing Section 57.79 of the Rockledge Land Development Regulations relating to requirements and standards for the direct and indirect discharge into the wastewater and collection treatment system of the City of Rockledge. And I move for the first reading of the ordinance by title only.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
In ordinance of the City of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, deleting Section 57.79 of the Rockledge Land Development Regulations and replacing it with a new Section 57.79, quote, "requirements and standards for direct and indirect discharge into the wastewater and collection treatment system of the City of Rockledge," close quote. Declaring that invalidity of any portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to authorize the publication and a public hearing to be held on April 18, 2018.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have two seconds. Do we have any further discussion?
I'll just comment that Kevin took your word for it. This is a good document, but I'm going to tell you, man, this is not going to hit any bestseller list. This is about the driest. I've read some dry stuff in this job, but this was... And, you know, the council knows. I usually go, I usually go through, I mean, like, copy-edit things, but I was... But I will tell you that Kevin has worked on this a long time, and he, I chatted with him before the meeting because I had a couple of questions about it, things I didn't understand. Not that he didn't understand, that I didn't understand. And this has gone through quite a process and has gone through the State Department of Environmental Regulation. Is that the right department? And so, that's all.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, let's move on to reports from boards and committees.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. The Citizens Recreation Advisory Board, minutes of meeting on March 15, 2018. The Council Finance and Budget Committee, minutes of meeting on March 21, 2018, and to consider independently recommendations contained therein.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, our first recommendation is Citizens Recreation Advisory Board, recommendation, support initiatives of students working against tobacco. SWAT relating to tobacco-free parks throughout Rockledge and Brevard County. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the group of students came before this committee, the students working against tobacco, and gave a very interesting and educational presentation to that committee. And so the committee, of course, was compelled to just pass a motion in support of the students' initiatives of going around the county and various municipalities in the community and trying to educate students and other citizens about the dangers of alcohol, pardon me, smoking and tobacco products and other things. And again, seeking to try and encourage the parks to be smoke-free, tobacco-free, and so forth. So for your consideration, Mayor.
Does anybody have any questions on this? Everybody had the opportunity to read it? We're looking for a motion to support or not support.
Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Move to support the initiatives of students working against tobacco. SWAT pertaining to tobacco-free parks in the City of Rockledge and Brevard County.
We have a motion to support? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Yeah, I figured. Yeah, I figured, go ahead.
I'll just say that I will not vote for smoke-free parks. I think that would be hypocritical of me to do that, and so I won't. For those in the audience who may not know, I smoke a pipe, and I try to be courteous about it. Even when I'm outside, I try to step away from crowds of people and so on and so forth. But to outlaw it in the parks, I just would have a hard time. I'd feel like that would be a hard time, a hard thing for me to support. I will say that. Now, I would also, being a smoker, certainly encourage any young people or old people, either for that matter, to give up the nasty habit.
Okay. But I think this is more about education than it is about outlawing, right?
It is, Mayor. It's more about educating people, trying to make the right choice for each individual. Quite honestly, on that committee that evening, there was another individual who happened to be a smoker and who happened to also say, no, I think it's an individual's right to choose to smoke or not. And so he didn't vote in favor of it either. So it is more of a, I'll say, supporting the students in their efforts to educate others, not about enforcing or making parks like... You know, you get a ticket or in trouble or something if you smoke in the park. So it's more about supporting the students in my, yeah.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed. Four ayes. It passes. Okay, unfinished business, none.
And if I may please, the minority rationale as well. I have a difficult time supporting the effort because the usage of tobacco is legalized. So that's my minority rationale.
Okay. Good enough. Okay, unfinished business, we have none. Consent business, Mr. Dasky.
Yes, sir. We only have one item today. Move for the approval of this consent business item. That's a use of forfeiture funds for confidential informants for the Department of Public Safety.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. This is consent items. This is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business, action item. Discussion concerning support for a proposal of the Constitution Revision Commission that would allow all electors, regardless of party affiliation, to vote in partisan primary elections. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The resolution came from Satellite Beach. They have approved this. It's Prop. No. 11 with the CRC, and they had asked if this city would be interested in supporting with a resolution as well. So I am asking for council's direction to either bring back a resolution for your consideration in support of it, or would you like me to take no action? Back to you, Mayor.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd be inclined to support this and ask the city manager to come back with a recommendation for us. This is one of those issues that, you know, I've observed in several recent election cycles. And, you know, it may not be a fish, but it sure smells like a fish when one guy files a write-in, as a write-in candidate, and all of a sudden, it closes the primaries to everybody else. And then you read an article in the paper two weeks later, and you find out he was like the second cousin of the leading candidate in the party that's now going to have a closed primary, you know? And so, yeah, I think this would be a good thing.
Okay. I support it 100% myself, too. Being of no party affiliation. What's everybody else feeling? No comments? We can leave it at that, too?
I tend to think that, or I'm against it, because I feel you should have your party declared in order to vote in this, in the primaries. So that's my rationale, my position.
Anybody else?
I actually have no problem with supporting this. I agree. I think everyone during the primaries should have that option to go out and vote. Different situation during the general election. But for a non, or for a partisan election, I think everyone should have that opportunity. I guess I struggled a little bit with this initially, and I talked to the city manager about this. I was a little confused as to what they were asking us to do with the resolution and where it goes from here. I mean, we can pass that resolution, but what does it do? Or where does it go from here? And I guess I struggled a little bit with that, so.
Isn't it from here, it goes as a recommendation to the Constitutional Revision Committee?
As a resolution.
As a resolution to the Constitutional Revision Committee because this is a proposed revision to the state constitution. And one of the few revisions that I've seen so far that I could support.
Yeah.
And are they going to ask other cities as well to support this? Or is it just they came to Rockledge?
I'm sure it's be a big lobby out there to do this. And a lot of cities might not support it.
Yeah.
And a lot of cities might support it. So it's up to this council to decide if we're going to, if we're going to support it or not.
But at this point, we only have Satellite Beach.
At this time, Satellite Beach is the one who sent it to us. And I think they sent it to the other cities as well. So I don't know who else is looking at it at this time. I'm sure all cities are either going to support it or not support it. But it's up to this council. If somebody wants to recommend it, make a motion. We'll see if it flies. If somebody, if you don't...
I'll make a motion that we would accept the recommendation and have the city attorney prepare, what would it be called? A resolution of support to forward to the Constitutional Revision Committee.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Yes.
Just to be clear, if it passes, the resolution would come back to this council for your final consideration and vote.
Or not vote as well.
Yes, sir, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
One opposed. Motion carries. Okay, action item. Discussion concerning support for Brevard County of Board of County Commissioners, Resolution 18-023, allowing municipalities to regulate efforts to alleviate harm caused by auxiliary containers, wrappings, and plastic bags. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is similar in concept. I'm asking for council's direction as to whether or not you wish for a resolution to be brought back to you for your consideration to support Brevard County's resolution with regard to causing harm to wildlife by auxiliary containers, wrappings, and plastic bags. So, thank you.
And what this means is the plastic bags they give you at Publix. We've had a presentation before this council before. Not all of you were on the council. Frank, I'm sure, and Joe was here. But they talked about how they're affecting the turtles in the ocean. And 95% of the turtles had ingested plastic bags when they did their study. 95% of the sea turtles had ingested plastic bags, which was causing problems for digesting food. And that was the biggest, the biggest part of that presentation was to make us aware of what these plastic bags are doing. And there's a... Here, go ahead.
Just in doing a little research, we got some information from another city. But just to read you a few bullets of information. It is estimated that there are 100 million tons of plastic in oceans around the world. It is expected that another 30 million tons will be produced this year alone. 80% of plastic debris comes from land, washes out from, washes out to sea from our beaches, streets, and highways, flows into storm drains, into streams and rivers. Over 100 million marine animals are killed each year due to plastic debris in the ocean. Sea turtles are especially susceptible to the effects of consuming marine debris due to their body's own structure. They have downward-facing spines in their throats which prevent the possibility of regurgitation. The plastics get trapped in their stomach, which prevents them from swallowing food properly. Sea turtles often mistakenly ingest floating, single-use plastic bags due to their uncanny similarity to jellyfish, their primary food source. In several counties, in a study conducted in Brevard and Volusia, scientists who examined the gut contents from both living and non-living stranded loggerhead turtles in those counties found that 100% of the 94 turtles examined had plastic in their gut contents. So just to give you a sense of the types of statistics that scientists are finding.
Now, Joe, if we were to support this, this is support Brevard County resolution. What does that mean for us?
Essentially, that we're just getting in line with the county and saying that their resolution that they pass is okay with us, and we back it.
Mr. Chairman, I think the secondary issue here is the home rule issue.
Right.
The county has passed a resolution opposing the state law, which is, says that we can't do this.
Right.
And the county says they want us to be able to do it. And since I'd vote for almost anything that, that has to do with giving us more home rule, which this would do, this would give us the option. It wouldn't say that we would have to outlaw bags, but it would give us the option of outlawing, putting conditions on the use.
Right.
Or any number of other things. So I would support it also, not just from an environmental standpoint, but from a home rule standpoint.
I agree. Anybody else? Everybody understand what it is?
Uh huh.
Help me to, Mr. Chairman. If the state has said no, what would be the purpose of us making the resolution, just aligning with the county, saying, hey, so at some point?
You shouldn't tell us what to do. We're telling the state. We have our own home rule.
Got it.
Okay. And it might not go anywhere.
Right.
Who knows?
Didn't it say there were a couple of bills up this year, but they didn't pass?
Right, so it'll come back next year.
So it'll come back next year, and it'll be.
Got it.
They usually, they, they come back, and come back, and come back until the some form of that, of that ordinance or law passes.
Got it. Okay, I understand that.
Which makes you wonder why something that wasn't good enough to pass in the first place, that we keep bringing it back and back, but.
Then they, they water it down, and they make all these changes to it, and they make it very complicated, and sometimes they pass.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to either support or not support Brevard County.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'll move to direct the city manager and city attorney to create a resolution in support of the Brevard County in reference to the auxiliary containers, wrappings, and plastic bags.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action item, approval of city attorney engagement contract for the period June 1st, 2018 through May 31st, 2021. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. Before you is the proposed contract for the city attorney, as noted in the mayor's memo. There are a couple of items of change. The nominal increase in costs for the subsequent three-year period, as well as the item with, regarding the health insurance benefit before you for your consideration. Back to you, mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's also on page 147 in paragraph L, where it says that except for loan agreements. Now, I don't know why that was in there. I talked to the city attorney and the city manager, and basically they cut and pasted it from the last contract.
There is a reason why it's in there. If, I review all contracts when they come through, including any loan documents. If they were to ask me for an opinion letter, which is a completely different animal, at that point, I am essentially putting my bond and insurance and my professional opinion on the line. And that is for a bank, essentially, to, for their purposes. So, example, when we did the renegotiation of the sewer bond, I had to do a, an opinion. And what that takes, what I have to do is go through each of the documents that were involved in that bond, review them to ensure that they were proper, and then give a legal opinion from the city attorney that it was, and that the funding process was appropriate, and so on and so forth. And then that goes to the bonding company, and that's the reason for them. That's essentially why it says that I should be not included. I'm gonna review them. It's if they ask me to do a legal opinion that it becomes a different animal.
Okay, so can we extract those two words out of that paragraph?
Sure. Just, just realize that if there's going to be a requirement from the lending agent or the bonding company for me to do a legal opinion, I will bill for that separately.
I, can I interject there? I can tell you from my experience, doing lots of commercial loans, lots of mortgages and other loans, not so much on the consumer side, but on the commercial side, and if the city ever did go borrow money, I guarantee you that the bank is gonna ask for the legal opinion. Bar none, I've never done a commercial loan that I didn't have that in there. So I, I would be.
Is an opinion of title different?
Excuse me?
Is it an opinion of title different?
Well, yes. They're all, it's all different. What it does is, if I review the contract and I tell the city this contract is okay, then I'm on the line to the city. If I do an opinion concerning a loan or a bond, I go on the, I'm under the gun for the bank and the bond company. So it's not just the city, and it's, so it's, it's outside of it. I can clarify that, but that's, I review every bank loan contract that we have. It's only when they ask me for an opinion letter that it goes into a, a different animal. And that's why I want to charge separately for it.
The reason I brought it up is because I want you reviewing those contracts.
I thank, I thank you for the compliment.
And trust me, he will.
I'm not trying, I mean, I understand that, that some of the financial, like, bond law and all that stuff is kind of a separate weird duck.
And, and there's also provision in there that any of these that I have to do for either a bond or for a loan, we negotiate the contract before I do it.
Well, I just, I just didn't want that in there where it would exclude you or preclude you from doing a review on the loan.
There's another provision in there that says that I will review all contracts that the city has, and that's what I do. I'm just, this, this provision excludes out if I have to give an opinion letter.
Then you're gonna be paid for that opinion letter.
Right.
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 Because you're putting your bond on the line.
And what, and what, what the banks do is that is included in the cost of the, of the loan.
Right.
Or the bond.
Right. You okay with that?
I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions on the new engagement letter with the city attorney? It's for three years, and it is a raise in his pay. But I think he went for several years without getting any type of a raise from the city, if I remember correctly.
I, I had, I felt like Tommy Lasorda for a while, because I had single-year contracts for about 10 to 15, uh, 10 to 14 years.
Right.
And there were five times when I did not ask for a raise. That was during the years when.
The rough time.
Yeah, when money got tight.
I know, and I appreciate what you did, Joe, and you do a great job for us. I know, as a mayor, I'm very happy with your services.
I, I, this is my, my fun thing to do, because the city appreciates what I do, and I appreciate the city for what they do.
You don't want to donate your services then?
What's that? Well, I've, I've been trying to get that 501(c)(3), but the federal government just won't give it to me, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I had the pleasure several years ago to sit on the reviewing committee when we were changing city managers, had an opening, and during the interviewing process, when Attorney Nicola came before us. And from that day to this day, he has been the most professional, knowledgeable individual that I have met in the league of perfection, in trying to keep us abreast of what's going on and out of trouble. And I support this without any, any reservation whatsoever.
Right. Anybody else? Everybody's okay?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Sammy, you understand what you're doing? You're paying, you're paying your city attorney some money now.
For the next three years, at least.
At least for three years.
There are two options at the end of it, that we can mutually extend it, but the price stays the same as the third year.
Right.
So I don't get a raise for those last two years either.
Chairman, I'll move to approve the contract with the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes. Joe, how many years you've been serving now? What is this?
Uh, this August will be 18.
Oh, wow. Wow, that's tremendous. Great. I remember it very well.
Yep.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further?
Call for the question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Protions, remonstrances, and communications. At this time, if anybody in the audience, they would like to speak to the city council about anything to do with city business, it's your turn. Got a card?
I have a card. Mr. Chair, Gail Stewart Isles.
Gail Stewart?
Isles.
Idol?
Isles. Gail Stewart Isles.
Yes, ma'am.
I had, I think.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. One Sweet Street, and you have my name.
Okay.
And, and it's actually Dr. Gail Stewart Isles, because I've been inspired by other members of the council to get my PhD. But I've been here before about the, the one topic I wanted to do, and I'd like to sneak in a couple of quick comments about some of the other things you addressed. It's the bus stop on Rockledge Square. I was over there today, and I see this little family with their little shopping bags, you know, little bitty kids carrying shopping bags over to, you know, way far away from Publix to the bus stop. And right now, it's dry, but we're only gonna get two more months of dry, and then they're gonna be out there in the ants and the mosquitoes and the lightning and the rain. And it's like, I think I just get the bus to go into Rockledge Square, and I don't know what to do. I'm thinking, I think we've got some good communicators here, you know?
Got some what?
Good communicators, persuaders.
We, we've been down that road with that shopping center before.
But was it the same people? Because they, they changed hands, I thought.
I'm not sure. It might have changed hands by now.
Yeah, I'd heard that they changed hands, and it's now different people.
But then we have to also talk to Brevard County, who runs the routes.
Well, I talked to them, and they said it was up to you.
It's up to us?
That's what, I talked to SCAT.
Well, we don't own that property, so it's really not up to us.
No, but.
We, we need to get that in writing.
Yeah. Well, I just talked to some, you know, person whose name I didn't catch, it's SCAT, you know?
We spent a lot of money on bus stops over the last few years, the city of Rockledge, and, and, and we feel the pain that you're talking.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
We had a lot of, we had a lot of problems with that bus stop right there. That was, that was discussed and debated, but I think we should have the city manager look into discussing it again with the, the new owners, if there are new owners. I don't know if there are new owners of that shopping center.
Understanding it was new owners, and hopefully.
It could be, it could be, I don't know. But I know they didn't want it in their shopping center before, and St. Mary's didn't want it on their property.
I know, that's, because I see those poor people down there by the hospital, too. But it's like the people with the shopping bags, that really gets me, you know, standing there in the rain. It's like, this is Rockledge, you know? But, and I don't think I'm the persuasive person that could do that, you know?
We'll, we'll have the city manager look into it. She'll come back with a report to us, and she'll discuss it with you as well.
Yeah. And if there's anything I can do, I'd be glad to do it, but, you know, I don't, I'm not that persuasive. I was a computer programmer, okay?
All right.
But there were two things you guys were discussing, and the trash bash tie-in was one of them. Okay, I've done trash bash many places, many years, and cigarette butts. I mean, it's awful.
The what is?
Cigarette butts.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Go to any, go to any intersection.
And I missed it when he stopped, you know? That's totally different. But this, there was one, the guy, I'm sure, there's a guy in defense, but jumped an ashtray right out the car, and there was a trash bale right across the crosswalk, I mean, the sidewalk, you know? And a full ashtray right there. And it's right, it was over like near Juddy Park or wherever, where that stuff can wash into the, into the, the river.
Yep.
And then it's a plastic, and so it gets ingested. So, you know, there's your plastic link, the trash link, that, you know, the public just, you know, it's just totally, you know, incomprehensible, someone can be so rude. But, and also, I've done trap neutering return of, you know, the, the feral kitties or whatever, the community cats, and a friend of mine, thankfully, we caught this one little guy, thankfully. He had eaten his way into a plastic container and was growing into it. So the vet just worked on him for hours, and it took him, I kept him, and I still have him, it took six months for him to heal. So, you know, it's not just the turtles, but I mean, that's bad, yeah, I mean, you poor things, you know, they're, they are, you know, their stomachs are filled with all this stuff. But cigarette butts are a plastic. So, yeah, I, I think you guys are on the right track with this support, you know, for the plastic thing, and the part, yeah, it is, I mean, not, no fence against the pipe smoke, it smells kind of nice, but the cigarette butts, I mean, that's littering.
Yep.
That's gotta be, something can be done. But also, it's, it's a hazard to the environment. So, it's good, push it out. But, yeah, if, if there's anything I can do about the bus stop, you know, but I don't know, I'm not.
We'll have the city manager contact you. Keep you informed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She just reminded me of something. I'll bring a picture of it in. When I was on the, in Washington, visiting my daughter in Washington State, we went to a park on the coast, Puget Sound. And they had a display there of all these different types of things that they had found in the water, everything from the sole of a tennis shoe to cigarette butts to plastic bags. And under that display, they had how long that stayed in the environment. And some of this stuff is, you know, will stay around longer than a sequoia tree, you know? 2,000 years to disintegrate, or something like that. I'll, I'll bring the picture. I've got it at home on my computer, and it makes a very interesting display. It might be something we want to talk with the county parks and reg people about getting put up at any of the, or all of the parks in the county.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, let's move on. Reports, city manager reports.
Thank you, mayor. I do have a few items for council tonight. We hosted a meeting with FDOT, TPO, gosh, there were all of us, City of Cocoa, School District, Central Regional Planning Council, Council, I believe. Anyway, a multitude of people here regarding Fisk Boulevard. And so the latest information, again, just briefly, I have a more extensive report, if anyone is interested, but briefly, in essence, they called it a first phase, if you will. It's budgeted for 2021, which I know seems like a long time away, but their fiscal year starts July 1 of 2020, and it would entail, it's called the three Rs, that's what I called it, the resurfacing, restoration, and rehabilitation of Fisk Boulevard from Barnes to 520. In essence, the three elements would entail pavement resurfacing, adding bicycle lanes, and closing any gaps in sidewalks along Fisk Boulevard. They talked about adding streetlights from Barnes to Roy Wall. And so, that's it in a nutshell, but I can tell you more about, well, first and foremost, I made it very clear that council, council's position is not in favor of roundabouts, that council would like to see stoplights at Roy Wall and Levitt. And there are nine elements that an intersection would need to sort of satisfy, if you will, to justify a stoplight. Anyway, there, I have a full report, and right now, Roy Wall appears to qualify for a stoplight. Levitt Parkway is, is getting there, but it's not quite there yet. There was a, a healthy dialogue about roundabouts and the dislike of roundabouts, and Brevard County and Rockledge residents only have the one roundabout, of which we all hate. Anyway, so, so there's more to come, but there will be a public meeting probably in the next 60 to 90 days or thereabout. I offered for it to be hosted here, since most of Fisk is in the city of Rockledge, and plus, we wouldn't have to travel as far if we're right here, and that way y'all could join us if, if it was at a time in which your schedule's permitted. So I will stay tuned, we will stay on top of it, we will keep you all informed of any other updates. And again, I have the full report, if you want to hear in more detail.
Dr. Fettro.
Sir.
We still have that property just to the north of Martin Road on the corner of Fisk, don't we? Just that goes to Phil Planning.
Yes, yes, we do.
So as we go into this process, let's see if we can work with the county and get them to put a little hitch in Martin Road.
Both Alex and Ken, and, yes.
We can line up Martin Road.
Yes, sir. We, we definitely have that.
Have I got any? Have I got it again?
Yep, she's got it. We got it on our radar screen for sure.
Okay.
Okay. So, again, I'd be happy to answer any-
I love it when I sit here and I see Alex and a little dog in the back window.
Next item is two councilmen separately. So, obviously, we didn't violate the sunshine law, but two, they separately talked to me and Department Director Lasada about increased security at our public schools in Rockledge. So, I thought it best to report out to the entire council, so you all know all of what each councilman or woman would know. So, there are two options that the chief is going to pull the trigger, no pun intended. Sorry, that just came out. That was bad. Anyway, two increased...or two options that will increase a presence at the public school, one of which is to have in the morning before and just as school is getting started, and then in the afternoon, when school is ending and kids are catching buses or rides and leaving, we will have a patrol car, a marked car, presence there every day at the schools in Rockledge.
In addition to the school resource officer?
In addition to the SRO, yes. Everyone, particularly audience members, please know that all of the public schools in Rockledge have an SRO, armed SRO there, school resource officer every day at every school. So, this will be an additional presence, as well as the other option, of which we'll do both, is to have at some point in time during the day, every day, to kind of have a walk-through of the campus as well. So, an armed officer would work with the principal as to where he or she would walk, but have a presence on the campus walking around. So, again, increased presence from the Rockledge Police Department. And then, thirdly, of course, there is a meeting on April 25th at 2:30, 2:30, at Rockledge High School, of which chief and I will attend and continue to have the conversation on school safety and security. So, that was, of course, the update to council, and I'll continue to keep you all up to date as things unfold. And, sir?
I was one of the people that talked to Dr. Fettro about this, and I had had a conversation with Chief Lasada and had a conversation with the principal over at Kennedy as well. And this was a...these two suggestions that we came up with, the first one of having the second officer there beginning and end of the day, which seems to be key times in some of the incidents that have happened at other schools, that started at either the beginning or the end of the day, when access to the building is less controlled, access to the whole facility is less controlled. And these seem to be things that we could initiate very quickly and increase by at least some small margin the safety of our students. Also, keeping in mind that, you know, the schools are where we have the biggest concentration of our citizens, and they are our most vulnerable citizens. So, anything we can do, and this is not going to bust the budget to do this, so seems like a win-win to me.
Good.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And my third item and last item is the annual...actually, the 14th annual Brevard County Prayer Breakfast is coming up April 20th at 7:30 in the morning at the Cocoa Civic Center. And I will...I'm not using city funds, but I will have a table using my personal funds. So, if any councilperson is interested in attending, I'd love to have you all there, but if you could please let me know so that I can RSVP for those at our table. It's a table for eight, so everyone is welcome. And lastly, I hope anyone noticed the lovely landscaping and fresh mulch on the east side of City Hall, thanks to the team. We had a team building exercise Friday morning, and we all got down dirty. And thanks to Ken and his crew to help us stage that and so forth. So, it was a lot of fun.
I still call it a work detail.
Back to you, Mayor.
She can call it a team building all she wants to.
Okay, report from the dais. City clerk? And there is no city litigation report. So, city attorney?
First, I would...it's always nice to have people say nice things about you, and I appreciate it a great deal. And I do mean it when I say that I consider my position with the city as a trust, and I will do everything I can to ensure that I do not violate any of your trust in me, and I will continue to perform to the highest ability I have. I think the city of Rockledge is something special, and it's because of the people in the city and this council and the people I've seen come and go on the council. Everybody has been one goal, and that was the betterment of this city for the citizens. And again, though, I really...I thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Martin?
We serve our fire ops 101.
Oh, yeah.
That's it. Gave me an appreciation for our fire personnel.
That was enough for you, right? Dr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Once again, I just have a commendation, and this commendation naturally will go with the city manager, but also Mr. Poole. Mr. Poole, the residents of Virginia Park, just as happy as they can be with the work that's going on over there in Virginia Park. And I just...let's just give him a second. You know, it's been a long ride. And number two, I think I previously mentioned, I will miss the next meeting. Altimese and I are going to be cruising the Panama Canal.
Good for you.
I yield.
Want to be like you when I grow up.
I second that, sir.
Dr. Ferguson?
Good evening again. I just want to just really share that I'm really happy to hear, along with Frank and the rest of us, I'm sure, just about how we're increasing our security in schools because, you know, we're aware, I'm not sure of the number, but I'm sure there've been...I've heard there was quite a few threats that we've had in our city, in the city of Rockledge since the last shooting. And that's serious, and we just want to make sure our kids are safe. I will be attending. Dr. Fettro, the prayer breakfast, so please add me to the list. And I like Councilwoman Martin. I'll stay on this side. I appreciate Director Lasada and all of those that work with the fire and police. I appreciate them sincerely. I appreciate their hard work, and thank you for doing that. Thank you for including us. We had a tremendous time, but I'm good for now.
Especially with summer coming on, right?
I yield, sir.
Dr. Dasky?
Wow. Thank you for the promotion.
He hands out random titles from Dutch.
I surround myself with all these PhDs.
Well, that's the first time I've been called doctor, so thank you. Just a couple of things. One, the outside, the landscaping project looks tremendous. It was well overdue and looks very good. Thank you. Thank you. And I'll mention the fire ops as well. That was an incredible experience for me, and I think for all of us. It was a good day. It was a fun day. It was a hard day. You know, and I will echo the thoughts of the other council people. I will tell you that I never, ever wanted to be a fireman, not even as a child, and this just proved to me that I made the right choice. But I am happy that we have lots of people that want to do it, and a whole new respect for them. I yield. Thank you.
Ditto. Deputy Mayor?
It was tiring, but it was also a lot of fun. I mean, how often do you get to cut the roof off a car?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we got to cut the roof off a car. We got to put out a fire. We got to go into a smoky building and find a body and-
Drag him out.
Wasn't deceased. Councilman Dasky and I, we didn't exactly use a fireman carry. We basically grabbed the guy by the wrist and drug him out.
But we got him out.
But we got him out very quickly.
And we didn't lose anybody.
No, we did not, and we didn't lose anybody. And, boy, that equipment is a lot heavier than you...
Oh, my gosh.
You know, when you see these guys out here roaming around a car wreck or something, and they're wearing all this equipment, boy, howdy. That stuff weighs about 70 pounds if they're wearing that tank on their back. And my shoulders were bruised just from the suspenders holding up the heavy pants, so... But it was...it was a whole lot of fun. And I'd like to thank Chief Lasada for acting very promptly on some of the suggestions we had on the safety for the schools. I just brought that to him a couple of weeks ago or so, and he was able to put a plan together that is hopefully going to be...well, hopefully, it won't benefit our students, but we'll be as ready as we can be with the resources that we have, and that's what we always struggle with, is balancing resources and needs. I think that's all I've got. Oh, thanks to the...we had the Dave Henderson Way Ceremony down on Barnes. We had the finely, folks. We had the ribbon cutting for Barnes Boulevard for the redo, the landscape design, the extra lanes, $35 million worth.
$35 million.
Glad we didn't have to pay for all of it, but it did suck up all of our gas tax money for about, what, six, eight years?
Yep.
You guys were on the council before I was, and it was sucking up our gas tax money when I got elected to the council years ago, so... And then Dave Henderson, of course, our former city deputy city manager and finance director, had a street off of Barnes named in his honor, well-deserved honor. And we also, the mayor and Dr. Fettro, Chief Lasada, and two or three other people went to Rockledge Regional Medical Center later that day for mayoral...mayoral reading-
Proclamation.
Proclamation about Doctor's Day, and that was very nice. The Rockledge High Choir was there. The cafeteria at the hospital put on a nice little spread. That was right tasty. And so, that was fun.
Yeah, I let Duane...I reminded Duane he missed a filet mignon.
What are you going to say?
He's not happy.
But I ditto what everybody said about the fire ops. That's why you do it when you're young. You're a fireman when you're young. That's why they retire them at 50 and 52 years old, because you can't do that. You can't do that when you get old. There's no way. I can't even put those pants on and hold them up. Those things are heavy.